School board meeting is now called to order. Board members, all members are present, so therefore we have a quorum. We've all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Luckett, it's moved. Doc Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda, board members is approving of the minutes. We've had an opportunity to review the minutes in advance. Is there a motion to approve the September 1st, 2020 minutes as presented?
So moved. Second.
Dr. Luckett, it's moved. Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. And just that quickly, we have gotten to the superintendent's report. Dr. Green.
Awesome. Good evening, board members, to our JPS administrators, staff, our scholars, and parents, and all of those who are joining us virtually. Just want to thank you for joining us this evening's board meeting. At this time, we'll begin with a video presentation with the latest district news and important updates brought to us by our instructional television production team.
We are profoundly proud of our GRTC program and the cadets who make the program possible. These sentiments resonate not only with JPS students and staff, but also with those outside of our district. This month, our website features an in-depth report on the JPS JROTC program. The title is "An Analysis of JROTC: A Jackson Public Schools Success Story." The report provides an analysis of the JPS JROTC and highlights the many successes achieved by this program for JPS cadets, and the many opportunities the program provides to other cadets across Mississippi and the surrounding states. Please visit our website to read more about the JPS JROTC program and the excellency of these remarkable young leaders. The National Parent Teacher Association has awarded the Obama Magnet PTA with a $5,000 grant. The funds will help to meet critical needs of students, families, and teachers caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. The funds will help the Obama Magnet PTA purchase Chromebooks, a storage charging unit, and Wi-Fi hotspots for families who lack home internet service. The funding is made possible by the PTA proud national sponsor Huntington Ingalls Industries. Three JPS educators have been selected to serve on the Mississippi Teacher Advisory Council. They are Rakeisha Gray of North Jackson Elementary, Gladys Dean Jones of Blackburn, and Philip Woolley of Chastain. The purpose of the organization is to provide feedback to State Superintendent of Education Dr. Keri Wright about the initiatives of the Mississippi Department of Education, the State Board of Education, and the state legislature. T-DAP vaccinations are required for all JPS 7th graders. A Certificate of Immunization Compliance Form 121 is required for all Mississippi schoolchildren in grades K through 12. For students entering 7th grade, the form must show a recent T-DAP vaccination. According to state law, parents must provide proof of their child's immunization record showing the date vaccines were administered by their family doctor, clinic, or a state health department. The Mississippi Department of Health Clinics provide mandatory vaccines at low to zero cost. Immunizations are free for individuals who qualify for the Vaccines for Children program, which is available to children who receive Medicaid or have a health plan that does not cover vaccinations. Please visit our website to learn more and to see a list of the more than 30 providers in Hines County. JPS has created a new attendance verification process for the district's asynchronous learners or students who receive instructional packets at home. Parents or students who are old enough to handle the online steps themselves will complete an online survey each day for attendance. The two-step question survey can be completed using any mobile device, such as a tablet, laptop, or smartphone. Parents are encouraged to complete the process for younger children. The link to the survey will be available daily in Active Parent and Active Student. The survey will ask for the student's MCIS number and if they need assistance with their coursework. The MCIS number is the Mississippi Student Information System. An MCIS number is a unique student identifier for all JPS scholars. It is used for their lunch ID, email address, and to log into their online classrooms. In addition to the lunch identification and email username, it can be found on your child's report card and in Active Parent by clicking on the Demographics tab. If you need help locating your child's MCIS number, please contact your child's school. Enrollment for the Jackson Public Schools Pre-Kindergarten Program is currently in progress. Parents and legal guardians of pre-kindergartners should complete the pre-K registration application online. The school will review the application and contact the parent to schedule an appointment to complete the enrollment process. Please visit our website for more information about the pre-kindergarten program and for a list of the required documents for enrollment. We count, Mississippi. Let's show it by completing the 2020 Census. To complete the online questionnaire, go to my2020census.gov. The process is quick and easy, and it will only take about 10 minutes to complete. It is also safe, secure, and confidential, and your information and privacy are protected. If you have not already participated, get started now at 2020census.gov. The deadline to return the questionnaire online is September 30th. Election Day is Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. Be sure to register to vote so that you can participate in this momentous event. If you're not registered, whether you have never registered or your registration is out of date, there is still time. The deadline for registering by mail is Monday, October 5th. You can also register in person if you prefer. If you vote in person, remember polls open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 7:00 p.m., and you must have a ballot photo ID. For more information, please visit the Mississippi Secretary of State's office at www.sos.ms.gov. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website, follow us on Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, and Comcast Channels 18 and 19.
Thank you, team. Just always appreciate you keeping us informed and updated on happenings all around Jackson Public Schools and throughout the city, and more broadly. As you can see, board members, we've got lots of things happening, and so we want to always keep folks updated on that. The Exceptional Education Services Department focuses on providing JPS scholars with disabilities and this exceptionalities, a specially-designed instructional plan based on their needs and related services to prepare them for post-secondary education, for employment, and independent living. At this time, our Executive Director of Exceptional Education Services, Dr. Thylathah Bingham-Gibbs, will join us to outline what we're doing to support all of our scholars, and especially those who have exceptional education needs. Dr. Bingham-Gibbs?
Good evening, Board President, Board Members, and Community Stakeholders. Tonight, I will provide a brief update on Exceptional Education Services, review the services offered during the virtual semester, and discuss the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act as it relates to services provided to scholars with disabilities. The Office of Exceptional Education Services provides students with disabilities a free, appropriate public education that emphasizes specially-designed instruction and related service to meet their unique needs. We must ensure equity by celebrating each scholar's individuality, interests, abilities, and talents. Next slide. Here's a quick or a brief overview of the services that we're providing during the virtual semester. We must continue to provide all services to our scholars ages 3 through 21 of age. Our services offered are Assistive Technology Services and Evaluation, Behavior Intervention Services, Educational Services, Language Speech Services, Occupational Therapy, Physical Therapy, Psychological Services. This is including our preschool and our school-age scholars, and our specialized medical care. Our assessments we are doing in person, and we're following the CDC guidelines while we are administering those assessments. Here are our demographic numbers. As of now, we have 1,962 scholars enrolled in JPS. This number is down from last school year. Last school year, we had 2,334 scholars that had Exceptional Ed rulings. Speech Services, we currently have 827 scholars receiving services, 216 are receiving behavior services, 137 are receiving occupational therapy, physical therapy, 34 are receiving services. Medical Services, we currently have eight scholars. I also wanted to add that our Gift to Education number is 934. This number's also decreased from last school year. Last school year, we had 1,279. But with these numbers, I want to just bring out the fact that we are testing scholars at this time for both Gifted and Exceptional Education Services that were unable to be tested last spring due to COVID. So we are testing these students, and like I said, hopefully our Gifted numbers, we hope to be done testing all those scholars, our second-grade scholars, by September 30th, and we will see an increase in that number. Next slide. Here we have the continuum of services. With the total Jackson Public School student enrollment, we currently have 90% of our scholars in General Ed with no supplementary aides or services. The next number is our 54.16%. This is the amount of students that are out of that 10% that are Exceptional Ed, that are in General Ed, but they receive accommodation modifications. The next percentage is 24.21%. These are our students that have received resource support, so they might come to Exceptional Ed for less than 40% of their day. The next percentage is 19.85% of the scholars that are receiving Exceptional Ed. They're in our self-contained classroom, which means they stay in that self-contained classroom all day, and they might leave out for less than 40% of their day. The next three areas of the continuum, which are our separate Special Ed day school, our residential placement, or our home hospital, we have .78%, I mean .78% of those students in that LRE continuum. The next following slides are EES resources. These resources are used with exceptional education scholars. The teachers and the service providers use these during instructional or intervention time. Our first one we have is the Mississippi Alternative Academic Standards. MDE provides a teacher resource guide, which helps our special educator with finding the performance objectives, giving key vocabulary, and relating this to real-world connection. The next one is Rethink Ed. This is a comprehensive curriculum that we use with our self-contained students. It has academic skills as well as ABA training and SEL encompassed in this curriculum. Next slide. We also use the AL program that we have three classrooms, well, we actually have five classrooms that are aligned just for students with disabilities in the pre-K, but we are using the same curriculum as our GNA pre-K scholars. Class is a, we use this with pre-K through 12 grade students. This is a, we're allowed, or allows us to customize assessments so that we can see exactly where the student has deficits, and we can start from there to close those gaps. Ed Plan IEP is our online data management system where we store and house our IEPs. Next slide. The Brigance Early Childhood and Brigance Transition is an assessment tool. The early childhood, we use this to see exactly where the deficits are and their developmental delays. And the transition is used for us to support middle and high school students as they prepare to transition out of school. EBS Speech Services is a service provider that we contract with to provide services for our students that are qualified for speech therapy. Next slide. FASFA Word is a program that is used to assist students to develop a strong foundation in reading and language. And Insights to Behavior is our web-based behavior management system. Next slide. JPS has internal Exceptional Ed programs. We have a Behavior Support Class that we have in elementary, middle, and high. Our two new sites for middle and high are Whitten and French, and the REAP program is for high school. Our preschool classroom is designed for ages 3 to 5. We have three new classrooms at the Van Winkle Pre-K Center, John Hopkins, and McLeod. Day Treatment is still at John Hopkins, and we also have Functional Skills classrooms in our elementary, middle, and high school divisions. Stepping Out Academy is for ages 19 to 21, and in this program, we focus on transition skills for those scholars. Next slide. Here we have our Educable Child Facilities. These are facilities that are used for students that require a more intensive LRE environment. Currently at Canopies, we have four scholars at this program. New Summit, we have one scholar, but we're happy to say that we are working to transition this scholar to Mura. So we're so excited about this child being able to transition back. Mill Creek Treatment Center, we currently have three students in McGee and two in Pearl. Next slide. This is just the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act. Like I said, the purpose of this is twofold. We want to make sure that our parents have, they have access to their children's rights, but we also want to protect their privacy rights. So here we are working. Our teachers and our service providers have all completed the FERPA Awareness Course through the United States Department of Education. They received their Certificate of Completion. FERPA is a statute that applies to all students with disability and receives services under IDEA. Next slide. Here listed, and I won't read them to you, but here are some of the best practices we have put in place to ensure that we are protecting our student rights. One of the key ones is that at the start of every session or therapy, we have a disclaimer that states how we will protect the student's rights. We are using techniques like only listing the student's first name instead of the entire name. We are also identifying on both sides who's listing and making those people aware that what's happening in this session is confidential. Next slide. This also continues to just be best practices that we have shared with our teachers and service providers so that we can ensure that we are protecting the student's privacy rights. That concludes, next slide, this concludes my brief update on Exceptional Education Services. Do you have any questions at this time?
Yes, Dr. Bingham-Gibbs, you referenced the numbers of students in occupational therapy, speech therapy, and physical therapy. Do you know the numbers of therapists for each of those disciplines? How many do, for example, how many speech therapists do we have? How many OTs? How many PTs? And I'm curious to get a sense of what the caseload is for our therapists.
Okay. We currently have 23 speech therapists. We have, we have six OT and two PT, six occupational therapists and two physical therapists.
Okay. And what is your assessment of the overall caseload? Is it, are those large caseloads for the therapists? Should we have more therapists to, does it?
This year is actually, we're, actually, the recommended from ASHA, which is the America's Speech and Hearing Association, is between 40, 44 to 60. So we're right in that range. So this year, we actually have enough on staff as well as contracting with educational-based services so that the therapists have a manageable caseload, and they're not over. Because last year, we had some therapists that had upward of 65 to 70. And with going virtual, it was really hard to implement the IEPs exactly the way they were written, so we had to have revision meetings. But this year, with our numbers and our support, we're able to implement those IEPs the way that they're written so that the students can still receive educational benefit from the service.
And is the 44 to 60 is that for speech for occupational?
That is, that is for speech. Our occupational therapy and our physical therapy, their numbers are lower because they see students individually. So their number's around 25 apiece.
Okay. And so, okay, so we're around the levels. What is your sense engaging with parents of students with exceptional needs? What are the things that we most, what are the things we do well, and what are the areas where we need to improve?
We actually are conducting our survey. Dr. Salgado and I, that's one of the things we're working on. So I will have feedback once we complete that survey. But just from observation, I believe that, you know, we provide them the service. We definitely meet their needs as far as what's on the IEP. I believe we need to work on just being able to listen to their concerns and not be so, okay, well, this is what the child has to do. But sometimes it's almost that they just need to talk to us and provide them with more suggestions that they can use at home. Because we're focused so much on the school outcomes, so just providing them with guidance on things that they can carry over and use at home.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Bingham-Gibbs, can you give some more kind of manager expectations around the survey? Do you have an anticipated date as to when we'll have that out and when we'll have results?
I do not. I don't know if Dr. Salgado has exact, he's on here. I'm not, I don't mean to put him on the spot, but I know we sit in questions.
Assist a little bit. We're going to reference this a little bit later in the New Teacher Project Scope of Work for Information Action. And so that survey that has been referenced is the work that's part of that scope of work. And so with the board's approval, we envision being able to have that data in October.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions for Dr. Bingham-Gibbs? Dr. Bingham-Gibbs, thank you to you and your team. I know you kind of moved as quickly as possible through your presentation, but that represents a ton of work and a ton of heart and commitment to equity and supporting all of our scholars. So thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, as you and others on the call, on the meeting this evening are aware, or might be aware, the federal government has approved several measures intended to provide some level of relief to individuals and to employers even during this difficult time. One such measure is the Payroll Tax Deferral Program. Cheryl and Miller, our Chief Financial Officer, will join us now to share just a little bit about this program and about the program itself, as well as our district's plans regarding it. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Dr. Green. Board members, brief presentation, I think that should be coming up very shortly on the Payroll Tax Deferral Program. So... Okay, maybe not. Let me pull it up. So if I can get sharing rights, I can share from my screen. Okay. Oh, so there it is. Okay. So the Payroll Deferral Program, of course, as we start all of our presentations, the vision and the mission of Jackson Public Schools is to, next screen, to prepare scholars to achieve globally and also continuing to develop our scholars to work as learning experiences. The Payroll Tax Deferral Program was issued, next slide, through the Presidential Executive Memo to go into effect September 1st through December 31st. What it does, it allows our employers to withhold portions of employees' payroll taxes, the social security tax, which is about 6.2% of everyone's payroll taxes from the period of September 1st through December 31st of 2020. What it does is basically affects anyone who earns under $4,000 before taxes by weekly, which is about $104,000 annually. So it'll be a vast majority of our employees could qualify for this. They would not be financially responsible for any penalties or late fees on any taxes that would be deferred. However, the next slide, our employees, it will be a benefit in some instances where most of our employees would see a higher paycheck through the months of September through December, but there would also be a substantially lower paycheck from January to April 21 because the district is required at that time to pay, to pay back all of those payroll taxes. Or basically, the employee would have to be responsible for paying those taxes that would defer from the months of September to December in the months of January through April 30th of 2020. The other issue would be then basically employees would see a substantially lower paycheck because they would be paying really twice the tax on those months. Then the district would also have the liability to pay taxes on any employee who was no longer employed in the district but that participated in this payroll deferral from the months of September to December. So one of the, we see some challenges with this. While a lot of employees have seen this as a benefit, there is, the next slide, no real guidance on how an employee could opt out. So basically, we would see this as an all or none. So all of our employees would have to participate whether they wanted to or not. Then there is also the question, a very significant question for us especially, is how could the district make payments on behalf of a person who is no longer employed? So for first, for example, an employee who opted or who participated in the Payroll Tax Deferral back through December, but then quit, we would no longer really have the ability to get that money because it's not a deferral that we pull it out and hold it into another account. It's actually not paid. But then the district would still be responsible for making those payments because basically in 2020, that employee was a district employee. For us, the first quarter of the year is very challenging for a lot of employees. We get paid at the end of November, and then the last day of, the last working day of the month of December, which this year, I believe, will be December 18th. And then many of our employees, especially our contracted employees, our teachers, our administrators, would not receive another paycheck until the end of January. So while we prepare for that as much as we possibly can, I know personally, that's probably the hardest 45 days of the year to prepare for that. And so we believe that participating in this Payroll Tax Deferral Program, to have the requirement that it all be paid back by the first quarter of the year would create some undue hardships for many of our employees. So because of those reasons, and again, no real guidance on how to opt in or opt out, no guidance so far from the federal government or any indication that it would be a forgiveness program because it is basically a deferral versus a forgiveness program. We have not, the administration will not be bringing forward a recommendation to participate in this program. So we wanted to make sure that the board was aware of the program. I'm sure you are. It's been all over the news. A lot of our employees have contacted us about that. But we see some real challenges with participating in this program. So wanted to give the board members and our listening public some information on the Payroll Tax Deferral Program and why we would not be making a recommendation to move forward participation.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Board members, do you have any questions with regard to this Payroll Tax Deferral Program?
Thank you.
All right. Hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Again, appreciate you. Board members, as our decision to launch, as you know, of course, our decision to launch a fully virtual model of instruction for the fall semester was based on the alarming COVID cases in Jackson and in the area and all of that, especially leading up to the start of the school year. At that time, in order to adjust and to prepare for this virtual world and virtual instruction, and we ordered somewhere on the order of 11,000 new Chromebooks to finally achieve what many of us have wanted for our scholars for a very long time, to have one device for each scholar in Jackson Public Schools. And contrary to some recent reports, we still have not received the actual funding from the CARES Act. Although it's been allocated to our districts and to schools and to scholars, we have not yet received any of those dollars. And to boot, some of our allocated. And to boot, uh, some of our allocations, the actual dollar amount that, you know, for us to plan around, uh, that shifted over time, uh, a bit. And so, you know, there's been a lot of consternation of, in understanding exactly what we'll have and, and how we'll be able to utilize it and, and, you know, uh, what will be reimbursed and all of that. However, we placed those multimillion dollar orders for devices in advance of receiving those funds because we knew that these were shifts that we needed to make, um, for our scholars and in the best interest of our scholars. Uh, unfortunately, we along with districts, and I've said this before, along with districts all around the country are facing huge supply shortages and extended delays, um, of several months in receiving laptops and, and other equipment needed for the online, um, learning. Uh, currently, uh, per our data, about 75% of JPS scholars either have a personal or a district issued device to use for synchronous, and that's, uh, real time, um, uh, learning with, with the teachers, synchronous instruction. While the other 25% or so of our scholars are receiving weekly instructional packets and outreach from, from teachers. Uh, we encourage parents to stay connected with us, uh, via our website and social media and paying attention to the, um, the phone blasts and email blasts that come out from schools, uh, to learn more about device distribution and, and other important news, uh, with the district. While virtual instruction, um, uh, board members, uh, we have to be honest, while virtual instruction has definitely had, uh, had its challenges, there have also been significant bright spots here in Jackson Public Schools. I've personally observed several virtual classes and witnessed some of the amazing instruction and scholar engagement and, um, just the, uh, the, the school culture and, and, and climate and all those things that you look for when we're in person, uh, in our schools. At this time, I'm pleased to share with you, um, a video featuring one of our very own, uh, Murray, Murrah High School math teacher, Mr. William Bradford, um, who's actually joined us this evening. I see him, uh, here, uh, in the meeting with us. So we'll pause here so you can just see a little bit of, of what's going on in his classroom.
Hello, my name is William Bradford. I'm a teacher here at Murrah High School and this is my AP Calculus class. Y'all say hey to the camera, y'all.
Hey.
Hey.
We got the limit is X approaches one, okay, of cosine of X squared minus one, minus one, all over X squared minus one. I teach AP Calculus, Geometry and Advanced Math Topics. Okay, so who can tell me, um, what this, what this limit looks?
Mr. Johnson is just navigating a bit. We're going to move it to slideshow mode so that we can see the full on screen. So he's just going to move it to slideshow and play from the current slide. So we'll move it from view over just a bit to slideshow and then we'll present it from the current slide. Real close. There we go.
Hello, my name is William Bradford. I'm a teacher here at Murrah High School and this is my AP Calculus class. Y'all say hey to the camera, y'all.
Hey.
Hey.
We got the limit is X approaches one, okay, of cosine of X squared minus one, minus one, all over X squared minus one. I teach AP Calculus, Geometry and Advanced Math Topics. Okay, so who can tell me, um, what this, what this limit looks like? What it looks similar to?
Uh, one minus cosine of X over X.
Right. This is what I use to write. So the students can see me write, if you can see right there. So that way the students are able to hear me talk. They're able to see my face. I'm able to see them as well as I'm able to write on the board as well. It looks similar to one of our special street limits. So we know if we have one minus cosine of X over X, um, if X approaches zero, it's going to be equal to zero. Okay? So we, what we really should try to do is we should try to get our limit as close as we can to one minus cosine X over X. My first two weeks have gone pretty well, uh, using the online classroom. Of course, we had a few hiccups, but it was way less than I expected and the students were able to, um, access the work. I think maybe because we, we prepared so much on the front end for this. I think that all that work that we did as a school and as a team, it paid off. Okay, so we got cosine of something minus one. Can somebody tell me something I could do to make it look like one minus cosine? Factor out the negative one. So if I factor out that negative one, I'm going to have negative one times cosine or negative cosine, X squared minus one, plus one, all divided by what we had on the denominator. I've got nothing but, uh, it's been like 200% support from my team, uh, the math team, of course, other teachers, as well as my administration, they've done nothing but make sure that we had everything that we need, um, to make this thing happen for not only us, but for our scholars, the most important part. Okay? So then we could further say we got the limit as X approaches one. I could really, uh, separate that negative one from the rest of the function, correct? Cause that's still multiplication. So I can make it negative one times negative cosine of X squared minus one, plus one, divided by X squared minus one, correct? Give me a thumbs up if you're still with me. Uh, now what limit property can I use to move that negative one somewhere? Which one can I use?
You can use the constant if you move it to the front of the equation.
Correct. So I can move that constant to the front of the limit. These are uncharted territories. Um, we're all new to it. Um, but I would definitely say they give it a chance because there's some learning going on. And our teachers here at Murrah, as well as across the district, have done a lot of preparation to make sure that, of course, your child is not looking at a screen for 60 minutes. Your child is actually interacting with the teacher as well as the instruction piece. All right. So then this would be negative one times the limit is X approaches one of negative cosine of X squared minus one, plus one, over X squared minus one. To the scholars, don't be afraid to ask a question, okay? I understand that this is, um, a virtual situation, but if you don't know something, don't sit quiet. Because if you don't know something and you don't ask that question, you'll continue not to know it. So don't be afraid to ask questions. Like I, this is uncharted territory. We're all new here. We're all, you know, working together to make this thing happen. You can do it. You just have to put your best foot, um, forward. And I'm for certain that every teacher in this district, uh, will put their best foot forward too and be willing to help, okay? And now I know that negative cosine of X squared minus one, plus one is the same thing as, what can I change that around to, y'all? Yes, one minus cosine X squared minus one, all over X squared minus one. And don't be afraid to reach out to your teachers. Of course, you know that you can't come knock on the door. So you have to send that message or you have to ask during that conference call, okay? Don't be afraid to ask questions. That's, that's my number one thing that I want to say to the scholars.
Give a huge, huge shout out to, uh, Mr. Bradford, just for being open to allowing us to record this lesson and to capture your voice and your scholar's voice in a day in the life. You're right, these are uncharted territories. Um, we're all still trying to figure pieces of it out, out. Well, one thing that I'm so, so proud of, in, in addition to the fact that you're just moving along and you're, you're grabbing the, as you say, the bull by the horns and moving along, um, you're making your own learning visible for all of us. You know, I've got some notes there, some things that I'd suggest to you to do a little differently here and maybe a little differently there. But the point is you're making it happen and you're, and you're all learning and growing. And I would imagine that next week's lesson and the week after that, the week after that, it'll be, you know, that much stronger and more, uh, strategies on and on. Kudos to you, sir. Thank you for being with us this evening. Anything you want to say? Any parting words you want to say to the people? Since we put you on Front Street this evening?
Oh, I just really wanted to say, uh, thank you for the opportunity, uh, to record the video. So, um, I was just doing what I normally do. Hopefully I made the district look good.
Oh, sir, y- you just don't know. Um, and I said to the, to the leadership team, you know, for, for several reasons, this made me proud and I wanted to make sure that we shared with board members into the community because, um, you know, if they're not with us in the virtual classrooms, it's hard to know what's happening. Um, and there's some really great bright spots. And so thank you again. Just thank you for, you know, showing excellence, demonstrating growth mindset. Yeah, clearly you've got a relationship with your scholars and a positive and respectful culture. So just thank you. And thanks to the entire team who helped to build and, and create that, that video. I know we're doing several more, I believe is what Dr. Cormac has shared. And so just excited to share more of what's happening and what's, what's going well in the district as we, um, just lock arms and do what we've got to do for our, our children. With that, uh, board members, President Johnson, I turn the meeting back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Um, and thank you, Mr. Bradford. That was absolutely wonderful to see our scholars learning and moving forward in this time of crisis. Um, it made me feel good. Um, and also a thanks to, um, Dr. Bingham Gibbs. A lot of the times we forget how much the people in this district do for our children and how hard we work. And so, um, her presentation was a reminder that there's a lot going on. Uh, now we are at participants for public comment. Do we have any participants for public comment? I don't think we do. I just want to make sure. Okay. Just an FYI to community members who would like to make, um, public comments. You can email your requests to RozWilliams@Jackson.K12.MS.us. No later than 5:15 on the day of the board meeting, or you can log into the Zoom meeting between 5:00 and 5:15 and indicate your desire to comment. Now, board members, we are moving on to information items only. The first thing on, um, for information only items is board member reports. Board members, do we have any members that, um, would like to make a report tonight? I hear something and I can't see. So any board member reports tonight? All right, I'm going to take that as no. And so we are moving on to Attorney Robinson, item B.
Good evening, board members. Uh, on behalf of the Office of the General Counsel, we present to you for information only, a recommendation that the district agreed to continue utilizing associated adjusters as its claim handler or third-party adjuster for our liability coverages. As you will recall, Brit Insurance Company is the board-approved liability carrier for the district and is asking our selected TPA associated adjusters and the district to agree to claim handling terms regarding our liability insurance with the company. The document that you were provided outlines the roles and responsibilities of each party regarding liability claims handled by our TPA. The document also provides detail that is consistent with the policy conditions issued by Brit Global Specialty USA. The recommendation meets commitment number five, culture of accountability and excellence. I'm happy to respond to any questions the board members might have regarding this policy.
Well, thank you, Attorney Robinson. Board members, are there any questions or comments for Attorney Robinson? If not, we will move on to, um, Dr. Bingham Gibbs, item C.
Good evening. The Office of Exceptional Education Services is presenting to the board for review of a renewal service agreement with Rethink Ed to provide a skills and behavior learning, learning management platform for students with disabilities. The key features of Rethink Ed are, it is a research-based program designed by leading experts and informed by experienced scientific advisory board. It has comprehensive functional skills curriculum addressing critical foundational inclusion success, academic transition career readiness and communication and social skills. It is a program built for pre-K through 12 with social emotional learning, social skills curriculum with assessment. It has student videos, activities, lesson plans and materials. It also has professional learning courses for adults to ma- maximize knowledge and performance.
Thank you, Dr. Bingham Gibbs. Board members, are there any questions or comments on item C?
Yes, um, Attorney Johnson, President Johnson, um, Dr. Bingham Gibbs, uh, you, you provided us some really helpful data and also, um, affirmations of, of the work. I was wondering if you could share some of that around, um, how this engagement, um, advanced some of our, uh, the district towards some of its goals in the spring and, and, um, just the, the feedback we received from their services.
Okay. Um, what we did note is, um, during the COVID-19, the school closure, we saw March and April 2020, we saw the highest number of people using the platform. During that time, also the number stored for the instructional resources that were being accessed, um, at the district shifted to digital and at a home learning environment. Also in April 2020, we saw the highest number of students accessing the activities and learning videos for functional skills, social skills and social emotional learning via their at-home accounts. So the positive to this program is it will also, um, parents have access to it. So they're able to see the videos. They're able to work with their students at home, um, with certain situations and how to deal with social skills at home. So that is one plus to this, uh, many pluses to the program. Um, also this school year was the highest number of student activities that were pulled. We had over 10,592 activities that were pulled, um, from the program to use with our students with disabilities. And once again, this program is, is set up to be used in our functional skills classroom with the students that had those significant cognitive delays. And so they're on a different or alternate curriculum, um, from our students that are in the general education setting. Some of the feedback that we received, um, from our teachers, we had one teacher was an elementary teacher. She said that she liked rethink because it gave her concrete objectives and instructions, um, on methods of teaching. Um, they also gave her activity sheets that were able to reinforce the skills that she wanted her students to learn. Um, she said that it helped the students by giving them a positive reinforcement method to help them bring out positive change in their student behavior. Uh, one of our, uh, behavior specialists, she really enjoyed the program because it was her first time, well, wasn't her first time, but her, her students that typically she works with are on the high school level. So this year she was assigned a, um, student in elementary that had autism. So the program provided her with ABA strategies to use in her therapy sessions as well as to use with the child's teacher, which that teacher, it was her first time having a student with autism in her classroom. Um, the, also like just with the materials that are provided, we're actually using with one of our parents. She really reached out to us needing guidance on how to work with behavior skills with her son. So we set her up with the professional learning courses that she can watch and there are 15 to 20 minute videos. So we, we just started that with her. We also have, um, we sent out letters to our parents and our goals to, by the end of September to meet all, or to send the letters to all those parents. So we will be able to provide feedback on, from the parent's standpoint of how they view this program.
Thank you. That, that's really, really helpful. Thank you, that, that's really, really helpful.
Any other questions, board members or comments? Thank you, Dr. Bingham Gibbs. Now we'll move on to Dr. Salgado, item D.
Good evening, President Johnson, members of the board, Superintendent Green, uh, team members of JPS and, uh, community partners. This information item only that represents an agreement between the College of Education and Human Development Center for Teacher Quality at Jackson State University and Jackson Public Schools. The purpose of this memorandum of understanding is to establish and guide a working relationship between JSU and the district in placing the student teachers with the district for training opportunities through school-related facilities and other experiences. To this MOU, the district agrees to accept students from the university upon recommendation of the Director of Teacher Education or other authorized personnel. Upon acceptance, the district agrees to assign the teacher candidates to cooperate in the schools and supervise same teachers as mentor teachers during their clinical experience to the extent that qualified teachers meet the following requirements of the university. Our teachers, um, must have, uh, a 12-week period, uh, engaging multicultural experiences, uh, attend clinical supervisory conferences between the student teacher or teachers, mentor teachers and university supervisor or supervisors. Improve the university on the placement process and reasonable instructional adjustments to accommodate CAEP accreditation. I support, uh, this agreement for it allows us to develop stronger relationships with community partners, but also to have community students be trained by our own teachers. In the fall of 2020, we have 13 teacher candidates this year. And in the spring, we're expecting between 30 and 35 teachers. These numbers, of course, vary because of the number of students that are admitted in the program and have completed previous requirements. Thank you very much. Is, are there any questions?
Board members, are there any questions or comments? There being none, thank you, Dr. Salgado.
Thank you.
President Johnson. May, may I just add, in addition to that, and thank you, Dr. Salgado for, for that item. I'm really excited and just recently had a, um, a meeting with the interim president at, uh, Jackson State University, President Hudson, uh, to, to discuss further, um, areas of partnership with Jackson State University. So, um, I fully expect that we'll be coming back to you with, um, with even more opportunities for our organizations to work in a more deep, um, in a deeper, um, and more thoughtful, targeted ways to support continued teacher development and the pipeline work, but as well, uh, direct services to our, our, um, leadership and to our scholars. So lots of great things, uh, happening in terms of, um, ways in which our two organizations can, can partner together. So I'm just really excited and want to kind of tee that up as we, uh, engage with this body of work that's continued partnership and there's even more coming. So just excited about that.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Board members, any comments? Dr. Green, do we know? Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say that I too am excited about the renewed partnership with Jackson State University. We have so much potential in so many different ways. So kudos to Dr. Salgado and the rest of the team.
And Dr. Green, do we know how many teachers we, new teachers we get annually from this program, from the Jackson State program?
I don't. Um, I wonder if either Dr. Cormac or, um, Dr. Smith has any, any idea of that or others?
Yeah, I'm just curious about this long-term relationship. So we're feeding into a relationship that then becomes teachers in our district and.
Yeah. I will say that we, we've, we've gone kind of back, not back and forth, but, but it's, uh, the partnership, I'll say, has ebbed and, and, and waned a bit, um, in terms of, you know, more focus on, on, um, developing teachers and the teacher pipeline, more focus on the, the work with and the kind of them wrapping their arms around Blackburn and supports of the Blackburn students right there at the foot of the campus. Um, there have been several other kind of, um, connections that we've made with Jackson State, but typically with this office or with that office. The conversation that I had with the interim president this past week, uh, or last week was really focused on how do we, as organizations, partner and look for really key focused issue areas that we're working towards? And, and, you know, different programs or initiatives can fall out of those. Uh, but, but trying to be a bit more strategic in it so that we're not just chasing funding and that sort of thing. So we can get you some data on, um, the teachers who've come through Jackson State and, and, and that whole piece. Uh, but, but we're trying to, to do, uh, we're trying to create something that's a bit more strategic and longer lasting and deeper, frankly.
Yeah, I appreciate that, uh, discussion and your bringing that up, Latisha, because in, I am not as up to date on the latest INDE requirements regarding the, um, passing of a very standardized test for teachers, but that's always been a challenge. So I won't speak on that, but I know that your team is investigating that and will be up to date on that. And, and because I think we've even paid for some students to take the praxis and, and I'm not sure.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Uh, there's a whole body of work that, that, uh, Dr. Cormac and, uh, Dr. Tommy Knowles are leading and, um, kind of readying, uh, teachers for certification and that. Um, and so this obviously dovetails with that. It's, uh, you know, not only those who kind of show up and they've got a degree but need the certification, but even before they complete their degree, how do we get them ready to come into the classroom with the kinds of skills and readiness that, um, that they'll need?
Great, thank you.
Yeah, uh, really exciting time and, and, you know, we're hopeful that the leadership over there is, um, is stable over time because there's a real commitment to, to lock arms with us and do some, some powerful work. Exciting.
Board members, any other questions or comments? If not, we will move on to Dr. Merritt, items F, G, H and I.
Great evening to President Johnson and school board members and Dr. Green. Um, the first item that I present for your review is the approval of the, uh, FY 2021 Consolidated Federal Programs Application that you have before you, which includes a sum total and aggregate, uh, aggregate amount of about, uh, $17 million. Uh, that includes Title I, which is the, uh, amount that's awarded mostly to schools. Uh, Title II is professional development. Title III is, um, English learners, uh, which, uh, includes immigrant learners when we have them, as well as Title IV, which is student support and academic enrichment. Uh, these programs are supplemental in nature and how we support and go above and beyond in supporting our schools. It's important to note that all of our schools and Jackson Public Schools are Title I schools. Um, of this, we support, uh, 201 FTEs through Title I specifically. So, um, you have before your review and you are able to see, uh, this year we did see a reduction in Title I. And that's mostly because of, um, the reduction in, uh, student enrollment. And Title IV is just, uh, it was the minor, uh, lower, uh, reduction, but it's not necessarily based on, um, annual student enrollment, but I'm sure that had something to, that's, it was impacted. Uh, are there any questions regarding the review of the Consolidated Federal Programs Application? And also, I'm happy to report, we have received approval. Approval has initially come in, um, February, um, of, uh, our school year, but we not, we currently have approval, so that is a good thing. And I appreciate the support of, of, of the team that I have and the Office of School Support to help move this forward. All right. The next, um, item that I have is the recommendation of a pool of providers, um, which include Cal and Rugamous for interpretation, uh, transcription services and translation. Uh, these are services that we are, and it says civil rights to our students, to our English learners, that we provide everything that goes out to parents must be in a language that they understand. Um, although I can't necessarily name, uh, the seven languages other than Spanish that are spoken or that are, that students speak in our district. Um, these services have been very beneficial, uh, to our student population and ensuring that we are able to provide all documents and all information in a language that parents can, uh, understand. Um, last year, although we, this is something that is supported with district funds, an allocation of, uh, $100,000 was set aside for these services. Uh, we roughly spent, uh, $2,500 for this service last year. Um, so this is something, of course, that we are required to have and is a very beneficial service. Uh, I do want to note that Rugamous does provide free service for, uh, letters that are, uh, 100 words or less. So a lot of things we have not been charged for in terms of schools. And this specifically, um, they translate in Spanish, uh, which is the, uh, second most language spoken, uh, in the district. So, uh, these individuals have been, uh, very, uh, good partners in the past. And, and let me say this, Cal is a new, uh, provide, will be a new provider this year. Uh, the next one is a, is a, a review of the MOU between Jackson Public School District and Heinz County Human Resource Agency. And this is specific agreement is for the, um, pre-K class that's housed at Isabel Elementary. We have had a sum of, um, had this partnership specifically for 12 years at Isabel. Um, we just basically provide the space for these students. Uh, a plus is that the majority of these students do, um, remain at Isabel and are, and are able to transition to kindergarten there. Uh, as reflected in the, uh, executive summary, you've seen a slight decline in the data. And that's due to just some, um, personnel changes in terms of, um, staff turnover in that, um, and that is in terms of a teacher in that class. But, uh, in previous years where we've had consistent, uh, a consistent teacher, that has been one of the highest performing, uh, classrooms that we've had in, in the district in prior years. But, um, again, you have before you the MOU with, uh, Jackson Public Schools and, uh, Heinz County Human Resource Agency. Uh, lastly is a new partnership that we are, um, that we embark upon, uh, with William Carey University, and this is an MOU, uh, to support those teachers. Of course, um, some licensure requirements in terms of practices have been waived, uh, due to COVID-19. As such, um, there are four required classes that individuals who are seeking a five-year standard license must have in order to become, um, certified. So we have partnered and we, uh, we hope per board approval, uh, award RFP 2016 to William Carey University to provide these classes, uh, to, uh, our teachers in the district. Uh, we could potentially help about 13, uh, pardon me, about 300 teachers, uh, with this partnership. And, uh, we're very excited and, uh, William Carey and Dr. Burnett have been, uh, very eager to help and support Jackson Public Schools. Uh, an asset of this is that, um, they, the classes will be taught somewhere, um, on our campus. So students will not have to travel and it's a real benefit to what, uh, how, uh, how we can grow our own, um, pipeline and our teachers here. Uh, once they, uh, have earned their five-year standard license, they will be required to, um, have a, have a three-year commitment with the district. And that, those are my four items.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Board members, are there any questions or comments? There being none, thank you again, Dr. Merritt. Um, I apologize, board members, I have missed, um, item E. And let me just tell you what a good team we are. I've missed item E and I've received two texts and a phone call. Um, so Chief Jones.
Yes, ma'am, if you would, please. Good evening, Madam President, thank you so much, Dr. Green and members of the board. Uh, the administration is presenting for your review. At this time, information only, the Jackson Public School District's 2021 Emergency Management Plan. Now, the Emergency Management Plan is actually an all-threat, all-hazard plan designed. And though it looks voluminous, it's designed to provide a scaffolding for each school's individual crisis response plan and other safety measures. And the plan is actually based on the five basic principles of safety, planning, prevention, mitigation, response and recovery. So I stand ready if you have any questions, please.
Board members, are there any questions?
Um, I do have, uh, at least one question. Um, Chief Jones, thank you for your responses to the questions. Um, particularly, uh, my questions are in reference to the, the various, uh, drills. And, and it's, in the plan, it listed several different scale, uh, you know, some, you know, some occur in the schools and there's tabletop and then there's functional exercises. Um, it seems like there's been a little bit of time that has elapsed since the last full-scale exercise and the last functional exercise. Is there a timetable to conduct those? Um, and also, if you could just provide your assessment of the importance of those for district readiness for, uh, any disaster that's listed in the plan or, or that is not?
But yes, sir, any exercises is crucial to evaluate your response and your response protocols as well as your capabilities. When you're talking about a full-scale exercise, even though it's a district, you're looking at external components. The last one that we did included the Sheriff's Department, Heinz Emergency Operations Center, uh, other federal and state agencies. So it's a rather involved process. Uh, the smaller exercises that we conduct are within the district and it actually measures engages our capabilities, response capabilities and equipment that we have to support those things that may have happened in our district and then provide support to other agencies as well. So to answer your question, uh, any exercise is absolutely critical, but we do smaller exercises that may not be full-blown. In fact, sir, every opportunity we get, any response that we provide is actually an exercise. It's like a drill, it's a mini-exercise. So we critique that, uh, response. We do what's called an after-action report. So we do have other exercises. It doesn't look like that from the outside, but we have an opportunity to critique our response capabilities and our actions and then benefit by approving on those.
Just a quick note also on that, um, oh geez, I think it was the start of last school year. Um, so fall of 19, there was lots of exchange with the, with some of the changing, um, requirements around drills and active shooter and, and all of that. Uh, there was lots of discussion, uh, amongst the area superintendents about just how, how, um, how involved the drills should be and, and the differing approaches to that. And where there was, you know, one or two districts that had full-blown, um, simulations, including the scholars and, and, and most others of us did some, uh, pared-down versions. So as you might imagine, lots of, um, concerns about, uh, traumatizing and, and just the, the impact of the drills themselves, especially in light of some of the, uh, challenges and, and some of the events that we've seen in the news. So, um, we're, we as an organization are committed to continuing to think about how we best prepare ourselves for any, you know, unfortunate event, um, any unfortunate event, while also managing stress and, and anxiety around those, the eventual, eventuality of those events.
Chief Jones. Thank you so.
Chief Jones, thank you for your presentation. I only have one question regarding the emergency management organization chart that you included in the plan as well as titles and role expectations. And I wondered, do we currently have these positions? Or is this just a schematic to develop one that is aligned with something like this?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, to answer the both questions, that in each situation, we have those individuals identified whether they have that particular title or not. We follow what's called the National Incident Management System Plan or Protocol. So based on the event itself, those particular jobs or duties and responsibilities may or may not be activated or they may be shared by more than one person. But yes, ma'am, they are all fully functioning.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's very reassuring.
Yes, ma'am.
Board members, are there any other questions? If not, thank you, Chief Jones.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we're moving on to information action items. Dr. Cormac.
Good evening to Board President Johnson, Dr. Green, members of the board, and those listening in. The administration is seeking the approval of an MOU between the New Teacher Project and Jackson Public Schools. The proposed scope of work will include technical assistance and support provided around planning for the safe reopening of schools in light of COVID-19 and also our ongoing virtual learning implementation. The district partnered with New Teacher Project last spring around several engagements connected with our search for our new executive team members as well as the development of a compensation study evaluating our principal and assistant principal salaries. These efforts were supported through a KELOP Foundation grant to the district. It's because of that work and the work that they saw that we were doing and engaged with that they identified additional funding sources to support our reentry planning from the Michael and Susan Dell Foundation. And so the scope of this work will be completely covered through those philanthropic funds. We're excited about this project. As Dr. Bingham Gibbs mentioned before, one of the benefits that the New Teacher Project has developed over the last decade is what they call an insight survey that looks at school climate. And they've adapted that measure for partner schools to look at virtual learning and what that fall process of reentry has looked like. So as, should the board approve this engagement, we would have the ability to do a, to collect benchmark data, both qualitative, both of a qualitative nature. And that would let us know how our parents, teachers, principals, and students are experiencing virtual learning. And that could be shared to roll up a climate measure. As the board will recall, when we launched the Strategic Plan Excellence for All, one of the goals of that plan was to have a holistic measure of school climate. And so this could potentially develop into that benchmark data that could be used over the remaining years of the strategic plan to look at school climate as a factor. So we support and encourage your support for this MOU.
Thank you, Dr. Cormac. Board members, are there any questions or comments for Dr. Cormac?
I do have a couple of questions, Dr. Cormac. Thank you for this presentation. When we use the term restart, help me understand, does that refer to like a fall restart using the virtual model? Or is restart something that's coming up in the future?
That, that's actually language from the New Teacher Project that they have written into the MOU. But it's meant to be a broad category to, to refer to the many ways that districts might engage in light of COVID. So for us, that at one point involved, you know, a hybrid option, the potential for virtual learning and an in-person model. We have, because of COVID, you know, moved to the, of the virtual only and in support of asynchronous learners. But they partnered with some other districts that have a slightly different approach. So it's meant as kind of an umbrella term to capture those three learning options.
Can you share the other three school districts that are part of this project's analysis?
I can provide that data to all board members. I don't recall off the, off the dome. They are comparably sized. And so as I recall, there were districts that, for which they had other engagements, but were on the order of 20,000 to 30,000 students. So they're of like size and I think could provide some, some learning opportunities and some opportunities for sharing to be explored.
And is it, is it correct that, that there, a publication will come from funding by the Dell Foundation that would describe what's happening in the four districts? That's great. That's interesting. One more question. Oh, will all of our schools be a part of the sample or it will be a sample size of a certain few schools?
So that's a great question. So the methodology that has been developed, and again, this is in partnership with Dr. Salgado's team and the chief of staff team. We will have an initial administration that cast a wide net across the district to get district-level data. And then each two-week period, we will do a sub-sample with a truncated set of items to a representative district sample. And so right now, we're looking at schools, a set of high schools that have a similar, you know, grade level in terms of the state rankings and a simple sample of elementary schools that are constituted will always include an English learner site in each of those smaller samples. So we're slicing that so that each successive administration, it could be representative, but won't be the full-on initial survey that, that, that all would, would receive.
Great.
And then from that, we'll be able to use that to make course corrections, to share the data, to have conversations about what's working, what's landing, and to be able to split it out by demographic groups, English learners, those from, those students with special needs.
Great. And one final remark. Could you share the report regarding the principal and assistant principal salaries with the board?
Yes. So we would, Dr. Green and I had some conversation about that. And we would certainly love to include that at the next board retreat that would feel like that would be a great venue for that.
Right.
There were some final edits that they wished to make. And one benefit of this ongoing engagement is that we're still in conversation with them about that. But our next step will be to collect some additional data from our own principals and administrators so that we can run a variety of different models to consider what our next step would be and what our recommendation would be.
I must admit, I wondered why this organization was called the New Teacher Project. So of course I Googled them and now I know their history and who's involved.
Absolutely. Yeah. The, the way that they began and over the years, they've, you know, adapted to take on other bodies of work. But yes.
Yeah. It's, it, it looks good. I'm favorably impressed.
Great. Well, we look forward to coming back with additional information on the compensation study and the other bodies of work.
Great. Thank you so much.
Board members, any other questions or comments?
Oh, one, one question I had, Dr. Cormac. How much does it actually cost? I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of exciting value, there's a lot of value we're going to get out of this relationship and want to make sure that we don't get into a position where we use private funds now. And then in the future, if we don't have private funds, want to make sure if we're getting high value, we're able to have the, we're able to cover the costs, basically.
Yeah. So there are a variety of parts of this scope. I can provide a bit more detail on each of the various line items. In terms of the, the time, I believe we've got a scope connected with communications work. And then also with the, the survey data that I communicated. What I've asked New Teacher Project to do is to, to write us a separable MOU that would go beyond the life of this, such that if we needed to create an RFP, a request for proposals around the ongoing survey data, we could put that out there. But that we might have existing or relationship with them that could be considered as a factor within any ongoing engagement. So we do, we did have plans in the work to do that RFP. But given this nature of work, we'll see how this plays out before engaging with other partners. So they'll, they'll be able to do that as part of a more formal process with us.
Thank you.
I'm most glad to see that some of this is going to include some communication support. And we're going to have a mobile app. So that's going to be good.
Exactly. So Dr. Green has shared that it's one of the goals. And you recall, we wrote that into the strategic plan in our commitment five, accountability and excellence. And so we're excited to, to move that forward. And so a lot of good energies around things that were included in the plan are coming to fruition.
Right.
And we'll have some other partners that help to just make certain edits as high-quality and excellent resource for parents and families.
Great.
President Johnson, just before we move on, I just want to appreciate Dr. Sevek's question about the funding and really kind of the question concern or what have you around like the sustainability. One of the things, just to call out here, one of the things that I appreciate about this opportunity, one, we, we were working with a partner who then they went out and sought some funding to support continued work with us. Work that we've already named, not just their own, you know, pet project that they're bringing to us, but work that we named that we want and need to do. So one, appreciating that. But two, understanding that, you know, we, we do have a strategic plan and we, we do have a set of things that we have committed to and promised to the community and to our stakeholders. And so just appreciating that there's an opportunity with this additional infusion of, of funding to, to not just do the thing, but to learn in the doing, right? So in particular, talking about the survey, you know, we could have just purchased, either through RFP or not, depending on the cost, could have just purchased a survey and put it out there. We've got an opportunity to co-create with TNTP and to, to learn from and to get, build this muscle, as I often say, build this muscle of getting the data, analyzing the data and determining what we do next in response to the data regarding customer satisfaction, our parent and scholar satisfaction. So lots of upsides here, but, but you're absolutely right. We, we long-term, have to be thinking long-term about the work that we want and need to do and not take on something simply because there's funding today and put ourselves in a situation where we can't sustain that work long-term. So I appreciate that, that call out and that question.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Board members, are there any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to approve Information Action Item A?
So moved.
Dr. Sevek is moved and Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you, Dr. Cormac. Now we have Ms. Miller, items B and C.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Board members, Dr. Green, I present for your information action. Item B is approval of the amended budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. These are the budgets that we adopted, of course, last year as we, as we start to now close the fiscal year. We will officially close the fiscal year when we submit our financial, our final financial report to the state by October 15th. But we are bringing these budgets to you as we work through the closing out process of making our budgets to actual. I've presented two major documents and I apologize for the length of them. But if you recall, these are the formats that the State Department of Education, the Mr. and State Department of Education requires is combined and combining funds. That shows all of the funds of the district and we're bringing them to actual. The district maintenance budget being probably the largest of them all at $203,313,300. That included several major items that I indicated in our responses to the board, but also included in the executive summary. And $2 million of, in revenue we included for the tax sale that will be coming in August that we always, we never budget that amount because again, that is always fluctuating from year to year. But we've seen over the past several years, three to $4 million in tax sale money. And so we use part of that to balance the current year or the immediately preceding fiscal year. And then to continue helping us support the activities of our fund balance. And I also failed to include this, and I don't know why I didn't think about this, but we've had that discussion in the budget when we did the budget for 2021. There's $4.1 million of teacher pay increase that was included in the 1920 budget to close out the year. If you recall, when we went into the budget cycle, we weren't really sure how much money we were going to receive for the teacher pay increase, but it ended up being $4.1 million. So those are our major revenue changes. We did not see the revenue that we had anticipated, half a million dollars for the sale of buildings and $25,000 for the sale of transportation equipment. But Dr. Green has charged my office and working very closely with Mr. Albright and the operations team, we, we will have a plan for you very shortly of how we will address our vacant properties. And so we will see some, we hope to see some revenue there. A lot of our expenses came from in district maintenance. Some prior year expenses from federal programs, about $398,000 there that we are cleaning up. And also some additional support we needed to put into the unemployment compensation fund and also the Life and Disability Fund. As we closed out the RAND grant, we had about $183,000 of expenses there that were not reimbursed by the grant, that were salary benefits that we needed to take care of. And also some overtime expenses. A lot of those overtime expenses, of course, were related to projects that the Facilities Department was doing to support the bond. Projects that can't necessarily be charged to the bond funds. But again, working very closely with Mr. Albright and his team, we have a plan to address that moving forward for 21. And then the other budgets that are being presented to you are being brought to actual, to reflect actual expenditures and revenue. And so we are bringing these, this item forward for your approval this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Are there any questions, board members, comments?
Ms. Miller. Ms. Miller.
Yes, ma'am.
What about the charter schools? Did I, did I, did you miss that or did I miss?
Well, we, we did have a $2 million increase that we included in the, in this budget now for the charter school payment. And if you recall, what we have done for the 21 school year is we actually anticipated a much higher payment to them this year. Actually budgeted for. So it'll be a $7 million payment in the current year. We had a $5 million payment in for our charter schools that required us to use some fund balance there. We are anticipating that $7 million should be enough. Again, I'm, I'm not quite sure how that will affect us for each year for the current year, rather, for 21. Haven't really heard how much they're being affected at all by COVID and how they're handling that. But we anticipate not being, not having to come out of fund balance anymore to make any additional payments for charter schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, board members, on item B? Is there a motion to approve Information Action Item B?
I still move.
Again.
Ms. Hill, you just moved. Dr. Luckett has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, then Information Action Item B is approved. Ms. Miller, Action Item C.
Thank you again, Ms. Johnson. Action Item C is the approval of a resolution of intent authorizing and directing the issuance of a GO refunding bill, refunding bond in series 2020A to not exceed $9 million. in series 2020A to not exceed $9,685,000. Board members, if you recall, one of the challenges that we always wanted to make sure that we operate and making sure that we are reviewing our finances and our long-term, long-term plan for financing is supporting the district operations is that we periodically review our debt service issuance and our GO outstanding bonds. Along with our financial advisor, government consultants, Mr. Nandi Thompson, I believe Nandi's on the line with us tonight, and our finance team, we periodically review all of our debt service out there to see if there's an opportunity for the district to restructure its debt. One of our goals, though, our primary goal is to be able to restructure the debt to basically take advantage of interest rates that may change and may give the district some cost savings to either the bottom line as far as interest, overall interest payments, and also if there's any opportunity for the district to get any cash. While we absolutely do not recommend extending the debt or extending the life of any of our issuers. Coupled with that, we also want to make sure that we are being true and above board and making sure that we are fulfilling our commitment to taxpayers in the city of Jackson, that we are having minimal to no effect on taxes. This opportunity came about, the financial advisor brought it to my attention as, of course, the shifting of interest rates, that we have an opportunity that we could restructure one of our outstanding debts. It's the GO bond for 2012A, which is a restructure of debt that was issued in 2006, 2006, as it was over the $150 million bond issue. This debt actually matures in April of 2028, but there's an opportunity that presented itself for us to take advantage of the interest rates, to restructure this debt, to give the district lower interest payments over the remaining life of this grant, of this debt, but also possibly getting up to $400,000 or so, around $400,000 in cash that the district would like to use for capital improvements and/or purchase of capital equipment to support operations, which could include vehicles, equipment for other purposes in the Facilities and Operations Department, which gives us an opportunity to kind of buy those type of things that we don't normally have district maintenance funds for. So this opportunity has presented itself. And I tell you, the way things change all the time, we met, the finance team met on yesterday evening and we were wanting to present a private placement type of process, which was basically we would just go out and privately place the bonds with financial institutions. The, as of yesterday, the market kind of changed on us and we now think that with the financing team that it may be advantageous to us to do an open market type process, which is basically the same process we did when we placed the 65 million. We go out for, to the market. This resolution actually gives the district and the finance team the opportunity, the ability to go out and start to work in financial markets to refund and restructure this debt in order to get the district those objectives that I listed at the beginning. I think I provided you with a couple of options and the way we wanted to do this. Of course, the optimal way to do it is a private placement where the district could receive some cash, but also making very negligible changes to our debt service requests for the city of Jackson. We made some commitments to the city, not only when we did the 65 million, but we've done that every year, that we are going to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. The good thing about this is the options that we have before us, either receiving cash upfront or not, actually will make very little change to the debt service. The good thing that we have seen so far is that we got the final assessed valuation last week and the districts saw a very slight increase in assessed value. That means that the property values in Jackson are either maintaining or slightly going up as it relates to the, for the district, which means that any request that we would make for debt service payment should not reflect any interest, any increase in the taxpayer dollars. We did receive, the city approved the budget on the Monday night and we saw a .79%, a .79 reduction in our millage rate, which is reflected again because of the assessed valuations going up. So this resolution will allow the finance team to get to work and start seeing where we have the opportunity to restructure this one issues 2020, which is the 2012A. Of course, of course, that we will have to come back to the board once we kind of do some final work with the bond markets. We're committing tomorrow to working on that with the finance team to make sure that it is of the best, it gives us the best result for the district. Of course, 20, this 2020A refunding is not the end of it. We would also continue to look at our other issuances. The one of the things that we always like to kind of work with, and if you watch the financial markets, as we get closer to a presidential election, we see those interest rates shift. And hopefully they'll shift again to our, in our positive, in our, in our, there will be a positive outcome for the district. But I from C will give the finance team the approval to go ahead and start working with the financial markets and restructure our debt.
Board members, are there any comments or questions? Thank you, Ms. Miller. Board members?
President Johnson, I'm sorry. I was cooking. Ms. Miller, so just a couple of points. First of all, you know, thank you to the finance team for identifying this opportunity. It's always good when, you know, we have other folks looking out for us. Couple of questions. So this doesn't, on this bond, the term does not increase, correct? The term on the bond is the same as it exists, so it doesn't extend the debt service?
Correct. It'll be April of, April 2, April 1st of 2028 will be our last payment, which is the same as it is now.
Okay. And based on the schedules, the estimated schedules that you provided with us, the debt service, and you said this, it does not change. The requests that we'll be making to the city, it's negligible, basic, it's immaterial. But it's very, very minimal. And in fact, it looks like there's a reduction year over year.
Yes, sir. About, on average, about $50,000 a year. So when you look at the fact that a meal in the city of Jackson is around $1.1 billion, $53,000 or $50,000 or so would, should not even affect our millage at all.
And was, did I read it correctly that even the $53,000 is a, is a reduction? That it was a reduction of $53,000? So it was a reduction in our overall debt service request?
Correct. And so over the remaining life of that debt, if those numbers were to hold, it would be an overall reduction of about $400,000 of debt service payments. So basically, our taxpayers would not have paid $400,000 of payment that originally was scheduled back in 2012.
And is it, is it the right, do I understand it correctly? That in addition to that savings, the district would also have roughly $400,000 available for capital improvements?
Correct. And that's actually net of cost of issuance.
That was getting to Desmond's question.
That's net of cost of issuance too. So Mr. Thompson is very aware and the team, as I indicated, we had a meeting like yesterday evening, the finance team. We keep, we're keeping that finance team very, very small. Of course, if we do a private placement, we won't have to do an official statement and have all of that and a rating agency call. If we have to go to market, we will have to do probably a very quick rating agency call and get a preliminary, an official statement printed. But again, our commitment is to make sure that those cost of issuance dollars are very, very small, especially because we want to make sure that the district can, can get as much money upfront as they can and not pay that in fees.
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing this to the finance committee a couple of weeks ago and flagging it as an opportunity.
Thank you for your support. And as I said, we will start to, if this is approved tonight, we'll start to work in the morning and see which way we have to go. And then we'll come back with a final resolution, with some final notes.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And thank you, Dr. Sevek. I know how hard you work on these items and you are technically our in financial interpreter for the board. Thank you. Board members, are there any questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to approve Information Action Item C?
I'm moved.
Second.
I second.
Dr. Harrison has moved and Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, board members, we have the Consent Agenda Items Finance. All of the Consent Agenda Items Finance have been reviewed by the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. If, are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items Finance?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Sevek has moved and Dr. Luckett has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, board members, we have the Consent Agenda Items General. Again, we've all had an opportunity to review this information and ask questions of the administration. Are there further questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items General?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Harrison has moved. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. And next, board members, we have the Consent Agenda Items Personnel. All the Consent Agenda Items Personnel have been reviewed by the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there further questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Sevek has moved. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, board members, we do have a consideration to hold an executive session. So is there a motion to close the meeting to consider the need to go in executive session?
So moved.
Dr. Sevek.
Was that Dr. Sevek that moved?
Yes.
Dr. Sevek has moved. Dr. Harrison is second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved and the meeting is now closed.